Okay. Hello and welcome to the Horace Mann League's podcast series. My name is Jean Collins and I am the superintendent of the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union in Brandon, Vermont, as well as a member of the Horace Mann League where I am fortunate to serve on its board. The Horace Mann League is an honorary association of superintendents, professors of education administration, association leaders and others who believe the common public school is the cornerstone of our community and our democracy. To mark its 100th anniversary in 2022, the league has launched a series of podcasts in which school leaders and educational researchers share their experience and insights into the challenges facing public schools, the value of public education and how the nation's schools have helped address the problems and opportunities facing our nation. Completed podcasts include the following: The State of Public Education with David Berliner and Diane Ravitch, two outstanding nationally recognized researchers in public education; Leading During a Pandemic with Superintendent Panelists Louvel Brown, Jim Softin and Andy Forliss; Challenges and Opportunities of Leading Rural School Districts with three superintendent panelists, Doug Burge, Laura Baron and Jean Collins; The Implications of Charter Schools and the Privatization of Public Education with guests Carol Urs and Kevin Wellner. All Horace Mann League podcasts can be found on YouTube or Spotify as well as on the Horace Mann League website. It is now my pleasure to introduce our moderator Jimmy Minicello, Director of Communication and Public Relations at AASA. Thank you, Jimmy, for moderating today's podcast and I will pass it to you to introduce today's guests.
Thank you, Jean. We have a very critical topic today, Critical Race Theory and School Boards. And I am delighted to introduce our three panelists for today's program. First, Adrian Dixon, Associate Professor of Education Policy at the University of Illinois; Daniel Solosano, Professor of Social Science and Comparative Education at UCLA; and Brian Brayboy, the President's Professor in the School of Social Transformation at Arizona State University. I would like to welcome all three of you to today's Horace Mann League program. Now, given what we've seen in the news lately on Critical Race Theory and the lightning rod nature of the term, is there a widely accepted and concise definition? Or how would you define CRT? And Professor Solosano, I'm going to ask you.
Thanks, Jimmy, and thanks, Jean, for the introduction as well. And thanks to my panelists, Brian Brayboy and Adrian Dixon. I, we've, of three of us have been in this, this field of Critical Race Theory for a couple of decades now. And I think if you combine our experience in the field, it's about seventy, it's seven decades. Mine, Brian and Adrian. And so for me, when I hear people who had just got, or just beginning to get into CRT or using CRT for other purposes, it sort of troubles me that they just don't have the background, they haven't done the reading, they haven't done the work of what CRT is, what Critical Race Theory is. So I have a definition that I use in my work and I use in my teaching. And it goes something like this, I say that Critical Race Theory is the work of scholars who are developing an explanatory framework or an analytical framework that accounts for the role of race and racism in education. I go on to say that Critical Race Theory in education identifies and challenges racism in historical and contemporary forms as part of a larger goal of identifying and challenging all forms of, other forms of subordination or marginalization. So it has those two parts to it. But, but the, the first part is really critical is that it centers race and racism in our, in our analysis, in our work, in our practice.
Professor Dixon, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not, and I defer to my senior colleague Danny Solarsano. I appreciate, I think his definition is right on, it is, it doesn't vary from what I, what I often say.
And Brian?
I think that's right. And I also defer to Danny. I think one of the, one of the really critical issues is to think about as we, as we sort of move this through, which is how do we actually have meaningful conversations about race? First of all, and then how do we have meaningful conversations about racism? And what are the interconnections between those two things as we begin to think about it? And I suspect we'll, we'll dig into that in our, our conversations. But there's a part of me that feels like being able to have meaningful engaged conversations about a concept like race, for example, is not an easy thing. So when Danny says, Professor Solarsano says, you haven't done the work. I think that's part of the way I take that, which is are we willing to do the work of being able to talk about really hard and difficult conversations? It's not an easy thing to talk about, but it is a, it is an important and meaningful thing that we should be discussing.
Well, Brian, speaking of having these conversations, what do you think are the differences between an academic understanding of the concepts that compose CRT and versus what is being bandied about in the political arena?
Well, for me, and I'll speak for myself, I think that Chris Ruffo, a reporter, really started to elevate this thing called Critical Race Theory. And if you, if you just sort of do some work in looking into, into Mr. Ruffo, the intent there was really to, in some ways, create a culture war around this. So the, the way it's been taken up is that it's, it's really thinking about the evils and the ills of the, of the US. It's been framed as, as in having young children, white children in particular feel badly about who themselves have learned to hate themselves. There's been a push to then hating the, the United States. There's been a, a call here that what Critical Race Theory does is indoctrinate children in very particular ways. None of that is evident in the way in which Professor Solarsano has, has talked about a definition. And so from where I sit, the intent here in terms of raising this is anything that deals with larger questions of race or racism toward an end really of engaging in, in what we might call a culture war rather than focusing and centering on the importance of, of learning and education and schooling.
And Professor Solosano, how can you react or what, what kind of reaction do you have for that?
I would go back a little further. I, I, I realized that Chris Ruffo, in that conversation, I think he had on one of the Fox programs was really a catalyst. But if you recall, that was in September of 2020. But I'll go back a little further and I'll, I'll take you back even further than that. But I'll go back to the spring of 2020 and I'll go back to February of 2020 with the, the murder of Ahmaud Arbery. I'll go to March of 2020 with the murder of Breonna Taylor. And then it'll take us to May of 2020 with the murder of George Floyd. And then the reactions to the murder of George Floyd around the country and around the world, or what some people are calling a racial reckoning takes place. And so that, that leads up to what Chris Ruffo did on that Fox program in September. And which led, because evidently Meadows, the Chief of Staff of, of Trump heard it. And they issued, within days, I think on September 2nd, they issued a memorandum that really challenged, openly challenged Critical Race Theory and intersectionality, those two concepts. And then in, I think it was September 22nd, 2020, President Trump or Donald Trump issued the executive order. You know, basically challenging, not explicitly challenging CRT, but challenging any attempts to deal with the kind of issues that Brian was bringing up about using race or talking about race and racism in, in, in the way in which we engage our colleagues at the workplace, in schools, in other spaces. So there's a, there's a, there's a little bit of earlier history. And I would actually go back even earlier. There's a book that I, I think is really, really important by Jean Soponcek and Richard Delgado. Richard Delgado was one of the first, one of the early founders of CRT and the law. And he wrote a book called No Mercies, No Mercy. And I'll give you the subtitle, subtitle is How Conservative Think Tanks and Foundations Changed America's Social Agenda. He wrote this in 1996. And he basically laid out the arguments. He laid out what was happening during the 1970s, the 1980s with the conservative right, how they mobilized to challenge the gains that were made as a result of the civil rights movement in the 1960s and 70s. And so there's, there's a little history here that I think that we should be, that we should be examining. And that's what CRT does, it looks at history. No context is a historical, no idea is a historical. This present time we're in has historical antecedents. And I think CRT looks at those historical antecedents.
Professor Dixon, I saw you nodding your head in agreement. And, and if you would, please add to what Professor Solosano had to, to say.
Yeah. And, and with, with, with Brian said with Ruffo, I mean, there was a, and he brags about this. I direct folks to go look up his Twitter account where he outlines, you know, he wanted to make Critical Race Theory the boogeyman. So whenever you heard Critical Race Theory, you would think negatively, you would think people who were unpatriotic, people who were attacking America, he wanted to align Critical Race Theory with that. And, and along with that, anything that had to do with diversity or equity or inclusion, he included culturally relevant pedagogy, ethnic studies, anything that he argued was a threat to kind of his very narrow definition of an American ideology. He wanted to align with Critical Race Theory, to malign Critical Race Theory and malign equity. And so, and so he, you know, obviously he, he found a sympathetic ear with the Trump administration and, and, and those folks that were there in the White House who were willing to make it a boogeyman. So I think those, so, so I think, you know, Brian kind of identified Chris Ruffo. But as, as Danny says, there's, there's been a long attack on not just Critical Race Theory, but anything having to do with racial equity, right? We've, we, as a nation, we've had a series of leaders who have attempted to roll back the very meager advances that civil rights legislation offered. You know, that was Reagan's, you know, Reagan's famous line was perhaps we did too much too soon as he rolled back some of the, 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 the civil rights reforms. You know, he, he redefined how one could make a racial discrimination case. You had to prove intent, that was not required before Reagan came into office when he, you know, again, redid the kind of civil rights legislation. And similarly with, with public education, kind of a, an introduction to a nation at risk was that he felt that, that the nation had made too many quote unquote concessions to special interests. And those special interests were people with disabilities, were people for whom English wasn't their first language, for people of color that, and so, you know, there, that attack started way back in the eighties. And we could even say with, you know, with Nixon and his kind of southern strategy. So we haven't yet had a moment where, where our, our leadership has been comfortable with diversity and equity and racial equity. And, and it's been a series of kind of rollbacks. And Critical Race Theory was born out of this kind of how do we have persistent racial inequality in a nation? One that says that you can be whatever you want to be. And after really kind of protracted agitation for civil rights. So how are we, how are we at a place where, you know, post civil rights, we're more segregated? Our schools are more segregated, neighborhoods are more segregated, schools are not as accessible. We have, you know, incredible wealth gaps, ownership gaps. How is that possible? And those, that's what Critical Race Theory attempts to try to understand how it's possible and how it persists. And where can we intervene to, you know, right the course?
So how are these discussions influencing what is being taught in our schools? Let's bring it to the neighborhoods from Arizona State to Illinois and then on the West Coast to Los Angeles, for example, in your neighborhoods or in any neighborhoods throughout the country? How are these discussions influencing what is being taught in our schools? Brian, let's begin with you.
I'm not sure that Critical Race Theory is actually influencing what's being taught in, in schools. I, I, I think that's become part of the, part of the narrative. It isn't certainly at Arizona State, it's, it's not a course that gets offered to teacher candidates here. It's generally a graduate level course that, that gets offered. There are certainly some undergraduate versions of it. I, I think that there are some interesting ways in which frankly, the textbooks are driving some of what gets taught and potentially the, the, one of the best examples of this is a an alteration to a textbook that, that actually did not happen, but was in conversation. It was going to refer to Black Africans brought across the Atlantic Ocean in slavery and reframe them as in fact guest workers. And so the way in which that happens is really a reframing of, of history. And so on a day-to-day basis, it's not evident in Arizona that Critical Race Theory is being interjected in, into this. I do think, and maybe perhaps we can come back to this, that there's, is a, a conversation that needs to be had about the role of civics and civics education. And for us to begin thinking about kind of the foundational documents of the, of the US and how we begin to think about those in relation to what young people are learning in, in schools. But teachers generally are not really engaged in Critical Race Theory as part of their, of their teaching, even conversations about things like slavery, things like the Holocaust, things like pay inequities and gaps for women are being pushed and challenged when for many of us growing up, it was part of a conversation that we needed as, as part of history and part of civics.
Either one of you, Danny or Adrian? Just these, these discussions, do they, are they influencing what is being taught?
As many of you know, we just passed a piece of legislation that's going to call for the ethnic studies as a graduation requirement in our public schools, in our high schools. And it's, it's not going to kick in, it's, you know, statewide until I believe the class of 2024. But it's starting right now, we're having these conversations right now. And I know they, we've had these conversations in the past and I think Arizona was a flashpoint of, for those conversations with the NASA Studies Program at Tucson Unified School District. But in California, we're having this conversation now. And in, in many cases, you know, I, I, I think as this thing moves forward in California, the attacks on CRT might shift or they might become sort of, they might bring, we might bring them together with ethnic studies. And I think that's what we might be seeing. I'll give you an example on, I think a week and a half ago, I was, I was on a, on a panel for the LA Unified School District, second largest district in the country. And we were talking about ethnic studies. We're primarily talking about ethnic studies. And we had a, an administrator who was, you know, in charge of the program in the LA Unified School District. And then I came on and I talked about my background in ethnic studies as a, as a student, as a researcher and as a professor. And then as myself as a student, back in 1968, where I began this journey. And then we had students talk about their, their, their experience in ethnic studies class. And then we had their teacher talk. But it was a really engaged and powerful conversation about the value of ethnic studies. When we got to the Q and A, they have a different term where, where the public gets to chime in. It, 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 it was like as if no one heard what we were talking about. Some, some, some folks just really chimed in, bringing up Critical Race Theory. We really hadn't talked about Critical Race Theory, we were talking about ethnic studies at the time. But I think that, that, that showed me that, that, that there are some political forces out there that are going to these meetings. And this was all on Zoom. And they're basically trying to disrupt those meetings and trying to bring in their agenda in, into those spaces. I think the, the Chair of that committee did a really good job of sort of engaging, well, not, not really engaging because there was no back and forth, but allowing them to speak their mind and then, but didn't allow us to respond. And so, but, but I think that district is, I think, doing a very good job. If you go to their website, they have a website, this one on human development or, I've got the exact actual site, but they have a PowerPoint on how they are beginning to employ ethnic studies and Critical Race Theory or engage with Critical Race Theory in, in their work. I, I, I think looking at our sister districts around the country, I think LA being one of them, San Francisco being another, Santana Unified School District being another, I can go on and on, talking about the different school districts that have been well ahead of the, this agenda in how they're going to deal with the, bringing ethnic studies into their schools. But I have to say, you know, I've also, some of you probably know this, the California School Board Association has a Critical Race Theory FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but it's, I, I'm not sure if I agree with everything in that FAQ. But I actually liked the way they laid it out. They laid it out as questions and then responses to these questions. I think it's a really well-done resource for school boards. It's a resource for schools and school districts. And it's a resource for teachers and parents in those schools and school districts.
So I have a two-part question. The first is, what kind of advice would you have for school practitioners, superintendents, faculty, staff, et cetera, on how they can approach these upsetting debates and attacks? The second is, what advice would you have for school board members who are confronted with the issue, this issue by angry community members? Professor Dixon, can we begin with you?
What, what, say, say your question again?
Sure. First, advice to school practitioners, school system leaders, faculty, staff, et cetera, on how they can approach these upsetting debates and attacks? And the second part, advice for school board members who are confronted with this issue by angry community members?
Yep. Well, and I've actually had the opportunity to talk to principal associations and School Board Association on this very issue. And one, I think for them to reaffirm their commitment to equity and diversity. I think it, in, in kind of repudiating Critical Race Theory, some of them fall into the trap of also trying to appease a group and saying, well, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. And then you're not clear what they're really committed to because, you know, you're, you're trying to address an angry mob who was whipped up about something that they don't even know what they're talking about. So to be clear about where their commitments are and to, and to be able to articulate why they have those commitments to equity and diversity, for many of the school districts, it's related to their demographics, it's related to achievement disparities. So, so they want to be clear again about what their commitments are and how those commitments align to what's actually happening in the district. And, and to educate themselves on Critical Race Theory. So I've done kind of what is, what is Critical Race Theory for? Again, for principal associations, so that they understand, again, that it emanates as an academic discourse. It's an analytical framework that we use to do blah, blah, blah. And then scholars have used it for education. And so they understand that they're not doing Critical Race Theory if they just talk about addressing racial disparities or creating equitable access and outcomes for students. That that's not Critical Race Theory, although as a Critical Race theorist, I'm happy to hear it, right? So I think I would encourage them again to be, to be clear about their commitments, to be able to talk about how their commitments align with the needs of the district and to, you know, to be bold in responding to, believe, you know, to their, to, to, it's important to support all students and that includes students of color, right? Because we're kind of in some ways co-opting the discourse to make it appear that white students are somehow that their livelihood and their, their success is, is a threat because of this commitment to diversity. And, and clearly that's not the case. And so for districts, again, to be clear about that.
Professor Brayboy, would you like to add to that?
I really appreciate what Professor Dixon's just said. I, I think that for me, I would, I would think about this really around a couple of philosophical ideas that have some real life implications in them. One is, is really thinking about this as an epistemological concern, that is, what kinds of knowledge just count? How do we think about, about knowledge and what gets put forward? And so to the extent that, that history is something that we value and is important, then really beginning to start to frame conversations around what history is. As great as the US is, there are some historical moments, there are some contemporary moments that we should begin to, to think seriously about. And so for me, I often say, well, let's go back to, and, and as a, it's one starting point, it's not the starting point. But if you just think about what the Declaration of Independence says, it's the intent of the US is, is that the preamble says, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And so if we're going to take that seriously and really thinking about the fact that it's not just men, right? It's women and people more broadly that have these rights, how do we begin to think about history as it plays out in that? And then that, that really goes, I think, in some ways to Professor Dixon's point and asks theological concern, which is what do we value? And do we value equity and diversity? Do we value our students? So for me, for practitioners frankly, and for anyone on a school board, the work of schools and education is about helping prepare children for the futures that they're going to be living in, to be able to be good citizens and good humans. And what that means is not just a focus on their individual rights, but what are also their responsibilities? So how do we begin to shift conversations and say, let's center students? Let's center students in a way that means that they can be successful in their lives. And as schools, we provide an environment where they can be successful, where they can feel seen and heard, where they can begin to feel valued and what they bring to school is valued, what they bring from home is valued. And so it begins to shift some of the values around. So if we actually believe in equity, then we believe that everyone comes to, to school, our children, our teachers and others bring with them really valuable things that they're going to rely on as humans and as individuals.
Well, in the few minutes we have left, Professor Solozano, you mentioned, or Solosano, I beg your pardon, to, to what you mentioned earlier about the FAQ. Do you have any advice for educators? And that includes, again, school system leaders, building leaders, faculty, staff, et cetera, on how to speak factually about what CRT is and is not?
You know, Jim, what I would do, I, I would take school board leaders, I would take as many people as I can to Washington DC on a field trip. And I would start our field trip at the National Museum of African Americans Culture and History, History and Culture. And I'd spend a day there and we wouldn't get through all of it, but you would start down on the basement floor and work our way up. And we would start from the period of pre-slavery, enslavement in, in, in the United States and work our way up to the, I think it's the fourth floor where we deal with questions around culture and art up on the, on the fourth floor and, and, and have conversations along the way, but certainly at the end of our, of our trip. And then I'll go across the mall and go east to the, the National Museum of the American Indian. And so to spend another day there and do the same thing, go through the different floors, the different exhibits, and then have these conversations about, about history and about culture in, in, in the, in the American Indian community, Native American community. And then I would go sort of west and then southwest, actually to the Holocaust Museum and spend another day there and do the same thing, just have these conversations about what, about our history, about the history of the United States. And then at some point in the future, there's going to be a museum of Latin American or Latino and Latina studies or history and culture. And I hope it's going to be soon, but we can do that in the future as well. And then have, and so give people a sort of a sense of, of the history of the United States as it relates to these. These different racial and ethnic groups, but 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 do it in conversation. And I think that would be powerful. That would be helpful. I I would love for us to do that. I would love school boards to have that trip, to take that trip. It would it would take you a bit. I mean, you probably had to spend a week there in DC on the mall, having these conversations. But for me, a field trip would be would be would be important. When I'm there, because I go there every every fall. Students are doing it. You see the buses pull up now that they're now that the museums are open. And they they're engaging and I hope they're engaging with their with each other. And with their teachers and with the people in these museums around some questions that we've been discussing here. But that's one thing I would do, Jim. I I I would take a field trip.
Terrific. Professors Dixon or Bray Boy, what would you do? What would either what would either one of you do?
With the school boards, I I like Danny's idea. I thought that was awesome to take to if if we if if. If that was an option, if that was possible, I would make that happen. I I think having to, what I think school leaders don't get enough of is an engagement with real people. With real families. You know, they unfortunately see folks when they're angry and they storm the, I was gonna say storm the Capitol. They come to the school board and they're angry. I would want to kind of have them, again, tour. Schools and communities and talk to real families in a in in as authentic a way as possible. Because I I would want to make that as as real as possible so they can kind of see why these policies matter. Why outcomes matter, why commitments to children and communities matter. And all the other stuff is really a distraction. And so that they remain focused on. The kids and the communities that they serve.
Well, family engagement is definitely a critical issue. And I can tell you that there are efforts underway to try to enhance. Family engagement to reach out, as you just alluded to, to the moms and dads and aunts and uncles and. And shopkeepers and civic leaders and and. These types of. Folks in every single neighborhood across the US. Well, this has been a very interesting conversation, one that we need to continue. At some other point, but it was a pleasure for me to get to know the three of you. Professors Brian Bray Boy, President's Professor in the School of Social Transformation at Arizona State University. Adrian Dixon, Associate Professor of Ed Policy at the University of Illinois. And Daniel Solosino, Professor of Social Science and Comparative Education at UCLA. Our topic CRT and school board, school boards. Thank you so much for the to the Horace Mann League for hosting today's conversation. But most of all, thank all of you for listening in to our program.